Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order, the Planning Commission. Judy, you want to call the roll?
Yeah.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Simms.
Here.
Styles.
Here.
Helsell.
Here.
Also present is Planner John Young, Alternate Adam Abraham, and Solicitor for the Village Chris Connors.
Thank you. We have the agenda. Some of us have the agenda in front of us. And is there any additions or modifications anyone would suggest? If not, we'll go on to the review of the meeting minutes. They're in front of us. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them. Anyone have any comments, changes? Page one.
My name is Miss Philp, last name Eli. First paragraph.
Anything else? Page two.
Page three, under Recommendations. It has the motion being moved, but it doesn't have its second or the third.
Yeah, and I'll get that in. Thank you.
Get the else on page three. Or eleven. I mean Judy does say these minutes are not verbatim, but I think they might be. They're pretty extensive. Thank you. We have no communications?
Judy, can you...
Oh, you want to approve them maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'm...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is communications. We have none, I believe. Item after that is citizens' comment. This is a period of time when you can address the Planning Commission on any agenda or item that is not on the agenda. Anyone have any comments? Okay. We have no consent items. So the next item is the continuation of the public hearing on the, for the right-of-way vacation that's been requested by Antioch for East Herman Street. I don't know if we need to go through all the intimate details of the proposal. I know we do need to, you need to go through your ongoing discussions that you've had in the last month with the college.
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to give a two-minute version of the original proposal and then go from there with your discussions?
All right. It's an application submitted by Antioch College in December for the vacation of East Herman Street right-of-way as identified on the attached documentation in staff reports. The college has requested the village vacate the right-of-way of Eastern portion of Herman Street between the cul-de-sac at Herman to Cory Street. The portion of the vacation is a 25-foot-wide section of street that is 1,022 feet in length. It is a paper street. It was heard on December 8th in 2014. However, the Planning Commission decided to table that application. And then the Planning Commission again tabled it at the last month's meeting. It is zoned at E1, Education Zone District. When looking at the co-ordinances regarding criteria for right-of-way vacation, the Planning Commission must review the relationship between the proposed action of the Yellow Springs Cooperative Plant Development Plan, look at staff recommendations concerning such things as present land use, adjacent property access, utility easement, and transportation needs, look at the validity of the applicant's reasons for requesting the vacation, hear general citizen reaction to proposed vacation, and also note the abutting property under support or lack thereof of the proposed vacation. The Planning Commission can approve, deny, or conditionally approve, recommend those three items to, three actions to village council regarding this vacation request. At the last meeting, Planning Commission asked staff to work with the applicant to find out some more information. Staff met with the applicant, the agent of the applicant, Reggie Stratton, a couple weeks ago with our street supervisor, Jason Hamby. The items that the Planning Commission was looking for was get some clarification on the concerns regarding the EPA regulations, figure out the need for the minimum easement with, reach an agreement with the applicant regarding the access, the maintenance of access for utilities on the right-of-way, make a decision regarding the cul-de-sac, and also specify water line access for properties along President Street. At the meeting, we reviewed many of these items. We found that an agreement that a 13-foot easement for a sewer line access would be acceptable, that limiting fencing for proposed farm development along the north side of the easement would accommodate both the applicant and the needs of village sewer crew, that animal grazing will not encroach within six feet of the existing sewer manhole, which is located in the middle of the right-of-way, and that the village, Antioch, will address the expansion of the cul-de-sac at Herman once there are more defined plans regarding that project. We talked, we reviewed the issue regarding the environmental concerns. Felt that, staff and the applicant felt that the, those concerns are premature because the college had not yet applied to expand their farming operation, although they have indicated they intend to do so in the future, and that is an issue that we will address at the time of that application. However, it does not pertain to the street vacation as the runoff coming from stormwater in that area actually flows largely outside of the street that is proposed to be vacated. At the meeting, Mr. Hamby specified that he needed a minimum of six to seven feet on both sides of the existing sanitary sewer line for vacuum truck access. We discussed this and reviewed the access path for that vacuum truck, and that access will be maintained. We both reached an agreement regarding the fence, negate concerns and access, which is where the applicant agreed to limit the fencing to one side of proposed easement. And then we both agreed that the discussion for the cul-de-sac should occur at a future time. And finally, it was determined by staff, after I reviewed the water distribution plan with Johnny Burns, that the road vacation will not affect access to water lines behind the houses on the east side of President Street. With this new information, staff has reviewed the findings and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to village council that the application be approved with the conditions of 13-foot-wide easement for sewer line access will be maintained, that any fencing along the easement will be limited to the north side of the easement, and any animal grazing from the current and future farm use will not encroach within six feet of the existing sewer manhole. And then finally, the village and Antioch will work together to address the expansion of the cul-de-sac at Herman once more defined plans are made regarding the project. Do you have any questions regarding my report?
Any questions for John? So in that shell, John sounds like you're satisfied in terms of...
Correct.
Okay. Okay. The applicant, anything to add?
Yeah, so...
Before we dive right into that, we should probably untable and reopen the hearing.
So we need a motion to reopen the hearing?
Oh, we do.
Well, just to be procedurally correct.
No, you're correct. Because we did make a motion to close it.
Well, to table it, which I meant.
Or table it, rather, yes.
Right.
Um, will we reopen the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, it is mainly a question of access for the village utilities and to that manhole. And when I met with John and Jason, we talked about various options. Jason seemed very opposed to any fencing crossing the easement. We talked about putting gates where it crosses that would not be locked so that he could have easy access to it. And he still seemed resistant to that idea, and that's why we landed on the keeping the fence to the north side of the easement. However, in talking with my colleagues, Nick Boudis here and the farm manager Kat, the garden expansion encroaches a significant area of, it goes beyond the easement. So what they're proposing is that we use the gates, which would be unlocked, and that the area of the easement, which is seven feet to either side, just be natural path. We wouldn't grow on that so that whenever the trucks had to access to that manhole, they could open the gate, drive through the gate to the manhole, or actually anywhere along that easement clear to Cory Street, unobstructed, with only, with only the gates to open. So at this point, we're kind of pushing back a little bit and asking you to consider the gates as a possibility. As I said, I may not, I don't know if you were going to put the map up again or show the, if you had that in the queue, but...
Mm-hmm. We have the map right here.
Yes. So in looking at that map...
There's two, the five-year vision map, that's a more useful.
Yeah, the five years, what we were looking at the last meeting.
The one I tried to hold up was the other one.
So you can see as, as the garden moves to the east, it expands out further and encroaches that easement quite a bit. So we're proposing a natural path through there, maintaining that 14-foot-wide path with gates on either end. Otherwise, what we'd have to do is fence two sections of the garden, kind of just like we did the solar array, which is not that practical. And of course, we'll add cost to, to the project, add that much more fence. So again, we're just asking if Planning Commission would consider that. We believe it to be a reasonable request, and we would put gates that are wide enough. It may end up being, you know, two rolling gates or whatever, but he said he needed at least that 14 feet because the vac trucks are very large. So he'd like to be able to drive right off the end of Herman on the flatter part of the ground there and to the manhole.
Okay. John, you spent time with this. What's the objection to the gates as opposed to...
The sewer department would need to have access, unobstructed access to that manhole, and the gates would be something that would, would be an obstacle to that. According to the superintendent, gates are something that, from his perspective, are completely off the table.
Really? Okay.
Where is the manhole?
It would be like right here.
I could locate it. I just walked it again tonight. So, it sits right out there.
Okay, so like in the middle of the garden?
Yeah.
He said right here.
Okay.
I think it's out in here. Okay. Any questions for Reggie?
I'm wondering when the new fence goes up, will, I guess this might be a question for you. Does the college need a building permit, any kind of permit to do that?
Be a fence.
You would need a fence permit, yeah.
A fence permit.
But that only relates to the height, right?
The height and placement of the fence, yeah.
Now, I'm trying to visualize it here on, on this handout. I want to make sure I understand what, what you had initially agreed upon was a, was a fence to the north of...
Basically seven foot to the north side of the sanitary line.
Okay, now is this the, the 1.8 acre garden that I'm looking at, or, because I see two, two gardens, a 1.6 acre and a 1.8 acre with a...
So of Herman Street.
It's right here, Jerry. So they're talking about fence, they agreed that this fenced right here, which essentially cuts the garden in half, as planned.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so now they're...
So he would like to put a gate here and a gate here so he could use the entire area of the garden.
And have a path, just a path there, like a gravel path.
And be grass.
That was the original agreement, but now Reggie's saying that they would like to just go ahead and keep this same shape and put gates.
Can I add a few things?
Sure.
Nick Boudis, in my position as the director...
And let me just say, we're going to open the public hearing here, too, so...
All right.
Yeah.
Well, in my position as the director of the Glen Holiday College Institute, supervisor for the Antioch farm, who brought me here today, and in talking with our farm manager, she reiterated the dysfunction, if you will, of taking that parcel and bisecting it with the fence. Fences are a necessity to keep Bambi out of the garden areas, and it just so happens by nature where the campus is relative to the right-of-way that this area that we'd be trying to grow vegetables in is split in half. And if I could just draw your attention kind of to the, oh, about seven o'clock on that little garden, you can see that that area gets pinched off fairly narrow on the, to the south of the, of the right-of-way. It would be very difficult to, to have a meaningful area within, within a fenced-in area that narrow. It would, it would impact our ability to manage the garden in that area, which would probably result in us needing to change the area where we'd want to, to plant vegetables out there. I appreciate the, the position of a person to be maintaining the sewer line, that it's an inconvenience to access the, the manhole by way of opening a fence. But understand from, from our position that if we, if we don't have that access, that on a daily level would mean a fairly significant inconvenience in being able to use that piece of property as opposed to a theoretical or occasional inconvenience on those occasions when, when the manhole would need to be accessed.
Thanks.
Do we know how frequently they have used the manhole or have had to access it?
I know that the manhole would need to be vacuumed out at least every couple times a year, and then any type of routine maintenance after that. I would, I'm sure Jason would have more of a complete detail of what the schedule is with that manhole.
And I guess, I know you've already, we already talked about this, but what is his objection to a fence that could be, that's not locked?
With utility easements, you need to have a free and clear access at all times in case of some sort of emergency. If, let's say, there was a sewer line break or something like that, and you need to get in there to, to fix that, you would need to have ready and available access to that, and...
And the gate would not provide that?
The gate would, would not provide that at, at that level of, for, for emergency situations or for anything else. So typically, easements do not, are not obstructed with gates or fences.
We've recently agreed to an easement with the village that includes the stipulation that a gate, unlocked gate be included. So I know that there's at least that one precedent, and I wouldn't be surprised if there are other examples of, of utility easements in the, in the village that are obstructed by all manner of...
What is that, what is that easement?
That's the, the water line running from a village water treatment plant at the south edge of Glen Helen, through Glen Helen to, towards, towards the water towers.
Okay.
Let me ask this. Apparently, you weren't involved with the discussions that they, that they had with, with Jason and, and John when they agreed upon it.
That's correct.
Okay, so, sounds like there was a lack of communication there at the college. Because that you were...
There was.
The reason I say that is that, you know, see, I'm kind of uncomfortable having to make a decision when we send our staff out and they talk with you folks, and then we come to a meeting, and then we want to change without our superintendent being here and kind of relying on, on putting it kind of on John.
Well, so Jason's comment was, his answer was no, no gate. That was his answer when John and I met out there.
Correct. And, and that's when the, because if I remember correctly, the fence was going to go all the way to the bike path initially. When, when you talked about a fence, you were talking about enclosing that, that whole area, and that you were going to have a padlock, which, you know, would be locked, which we didn't like.
I mean, the five-year plan for the farm would be to have more fencing that would run the perimeter of the south campus, but not the fencing for the garden as as we described.
See, because it, it looks like we're back again to the, to the full fence with an open. Am I understanding that correctly now?
Well, I think what he wants to do is fence this garden with the two gates. That's, I think, the...
We're not talking about the solar array at all.
No, 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 no. We're talking about the, because I believe the initial discussion, the fence was going to go the whole way, right?
Was it?
Because, because it, because it looks like now we have a, a half a fence, is what we agreed upon.
It would, it would be a fence, and what, are you saying the, what our agreement was when we met on site, or...
No, I'm talking about the, the initial proposal. See, because I'm...
The initial proposal here has a fence on one side of the animal garden, the other side has a, is the fence off of the cul-de-sac. So if you look at the cul-de-sac and you look past where that red line is...
Correct.
There's like a rounded fence there. That's the fence on the west side of the garden. And then, and then there's another fence in between the pathway, the garden, the pathway, and the solar array. There's a fence right there in this drawing.
Okay, John, I'm still kind of dumb here. I don't, I just don't, see, see, I see the solar array with the path going through the solar array, okay? And just the north of that is the annual garden, okay? That we're, that's in question.
The garden is, is west of that.
Yeah, of course. So that's the gardening question, okay? They initially proposed to fence that whole garden area, correct?
Yeah.
As shown in the draw.
As shown in the draw.
Okay. So then what was agreed upon was to only put a fence to the north...
Of the easement.
Of the easement.
Yes.
Okay.
Which means then your garden would just be, they would fence just this portion.
Oh, okay. So they're talking about fencing...
Just that northern half of this southern garden. And so what Nick is saying is then, if you put a fence down here, you've got this odd little shape. You can't really come out here because that's where that swale is.
See, I don't see the odd little shape. It looks like...
Well, what he's saying is though...
Would it be too much to ask Reggie to draw the proposed fence?
Is if he puts another fence here...
Yeah, you can do that.
Now you've got this area down here that's not as useful.
Here.
But I didn't think that's what they're talking about. I thought they were just talking about...
Yeah, so what he's saying is if you...
Yeah.
Fits just that portion.
What we were discussing is putting it up here, right?
This is the existing garden. This is the...
Well, they would have to fence it to keep the deer out, but it's going to be this oblong shape, and this western part of it's not going to be as useful.
So here's that, and there's the fence.
Okay, that's what I was trying to visualize, that the fence goes this way.
You can see where the easement cuts through, right through the center.
The easement cuts through here, okay? And then what you had talked about, saying the fence on this, just this side.
Well, Jason had wanted the fence to stay north.
Of the easement, okay.
Now, I didn't say I wouldn't, I wouldn't fence in the other section of the farm, of the garden. What I told Jason, and John, you'll remember this, is there would be no animal pens encroaching the easement. And would, the animal pens would be further south on south campus. So I think there was a little miscommunication going on there. What we'd like to avoid is having to fence this little area off and fence this little area off and leave this open path through here. We'd rather fence this whole area, gate here, gate here, and we wouldn't grow in this path here. We'd keep this 14-foot-wide path coming through.
I would finalize that. Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I guess if you can't do the gates, and you don't want to do a fence there, is there any other solution for you?
Well, as Nick mentioned earlier, they'd have to rethink how they're going to place the garden, and it may put it in an undesirable spot as far as the solar quality and conditions. The other option is split it in half as you have, which, you know, as Nick said, it would be tough to manage two areas that small.
So having like the whole thing fenced except for the area where you were going to have gates, you're feeling is, because that would leave an opening for deer, other animals to come in?
It would have to be walked around.
Not necessarily.
Just put up a gate. Our, our existing garden provides a somewhat of an example of the kind of porosity we intend to have. That, that garden has gates that are publicly accessible on, on each of its four sides, and those are, those are unlocked, and anybody wanting to walk the area is able to go and open the gate before they put the gate in, and enter the site. We'd imagine something similar here where it would have several access points, but where the right-of-way would be sufficiently large for, for a vehicle to ingress and, and egress.
Okay.
To answer Susan's question, we're, we're really trying to thread a needle in some ways on, on where we site, where to grow things out there. Soil has to be decent, and every place that we put the geothermal array, it almost can't grow there because it takes the soil layer and just flips it over. We also accommodate drainage for... We also accommodate drainage for a number of the properties that are, that are west of us and that creates a swale that goes across, across that land from west to east. And that swale is, is just on the south side of what we anticipate as the, the annual growing area. So we can't, we have to respect that, that flow of water and can't, can't put any annual growing area, annual garden stuff in that area. So we're really fairly limited to the area north of the swale, which is why the, the proposed garden, after lots of back and forth, is the best place that we have for growing, growing vegetables on site for students.
Okay, I think what I'll do here is we can continue this discussion, but let's open the microphone up for public comment and then we'll come back to this and, but let's hear from anyone else who has anything to say. So if anyone has anything to add to this topic, step forward, introduce yourself and let her rip.
I'm Waring Lynch. I'm a trustee of the college and I'm on the facilities committee and I, I really just learned about this at our, at our meeting today. And I don't really have anything to add. I wanna, I know that the, the village has been very cooperative in, in helping Antioch expand and do the things we wanna do. And I want, thank you for that and hope that somehow we can work this out so that it's a decent solution. That's it, thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else? Well, in that case, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing and come back to the discussion. I mean, I think the crux of it is, is Jason doesn't want the gates. Is it unreasonable for Jason to not want the gates? It would, like Jerry said, I think, be very helpful to have him here, to hear that firsthand. That being said, though, this is about the sixth month that we've talked about this in one fashion or another.
Well.
So I'm sure.
Go ahead.
Reggie doesn't wanna delay too much longer?
Kinda just make a couple of my comments based on what I've been observing here. One is, you know, Jason felt comfortable that we had reached an agreement with this, which is why he was not here today. So, you know, having him here and addressing these things at the, at the hearing would probably be beneficial to give you guys some perspective from the staff issue because staff is the one that will be maintaining the sewers and accessing them. So if he has legitimate concerns, those should be voiced at this meeting. The second thing is, I just wanna review exactly what we're approv, what we're reviewing here as, as a commission. This is for a, a street vacation, not for the operation of a farm or the expansion of a farm. So although this might be something that's in the college's future plans, it's not a material application before the planning commission at this time. This is not an application that is assuming de facto that this farm use expansion would actually move forward if it is indeed applied to by the planning commission. And if any conditions are applied to the, by the planning commission at the time of the application of the farm use, then that could also factor into this. So with that, I would move that to, to say perhaps we would want to, the, the commission, it would be wise for the commission to review this, the street vacation when the school brings the farm use expansion application to the commission.
Any further discussion? I, I guess, I'm just kinda thinking the same thing, is just take the fence out of it and know that the fencing would have to be reviewed when the farm, this annual garden is identified. And, and then we can hear from Jason also and kind of not do this over, but at the same time, allow this, this, at least the vacation to proceed.
This would go to village council where it would have a hearing as well.
Right.
So you could add a condition in that say that, that the access to existing utilities, adequate access to existing utilities would be maintained at a distance of the, the width that he proposed, which is the 13 feet, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's your first condition anyway, right? The 13-foot wide easement with, for sewer line access will be maintained, period.
Yes.
And then the fence, does that go through planning commission first? The fence is just a fence application and you can.
If the, if the farm is expanded. It is a conditional use in the education one district. So it would have to come back to, the plan would have to come back to the planning commission for, for review.
Even the gar, just the garden?
For just the garden, I would have to double check that, but it is part of the whole educational farming initiative, so.
So it would have to apply for conditional use to grow a garden there?
If it's just the garden, probably not. But if it's including any type of animal, cause currently there's animal chicken coop rotation on there right now. But if it, if it did include an animal component, it wouldn't be going back to the planning commission, so.
But there are animals there.
Yes, I mean, if they have more animals.
Okay.
So if the garden were to be expanded today, they may be able to have approval for that. The fence, of course, would require a fence permit. At that time, staff would review if there are any easements that need to be maintained as of any fence application and then decide from there. So, yeah, that would be a staff level determination.
So chapter 1258 Schedule District Uses says for education that agribusiness is a conditional use, that farm, including raising animals, conditional, food processing, conditional. Greenhouse nursery is permitted as long as it's not for retail sales and community gardens are permitted. So it sounds like it would have to come back.
It would not have to.
It would.
Community gar, gardens are.
Permitted.
Those are permitted.
What is this? What would it be?
Farm, including raising animals.
Yeah, I looked at it as sustainable farming, including raising animals.
Really? Cause they've grown grass there right now. I mean, I don't really understand what the difference between growing grass and vegetables is in the zoning. I mean.
Well, it's, it's.
The five-year plan right now really sounds like it's allowed, that they would have to apply for the fence, but.
I mean, I think there's a lot, a lot of differences. There's, there's, for one, animals and, you know, you're more closer to residents there. I think that's why it was put as a conditional use, is because, you know, we've never formally been.
But they haven't applied for animals yet. They're talking about a garden.
Well, I know, they haven't applied for anything yet there.
We have applied for a fence for that area.
Okay.
With the understanding that we would grow vegetables there. So I have a little bit of catch-22 listening to, to this conversation, Mark, because we're, we don't intend to, to do animal grazing in that area. And we do intend, once we've figured out the details of, of our proposed grazing area, to bring that before, before this body for, for your consideration. But, but we know what we want to do with, with the annual garden and we proposed that in, in submitting our fence application last year. So we can't get started on growing anything there until we, until we get this detail sorted out.
Has the fence been approved?
Yeah.
The fence is, wasn't approved because of the right-of-way issue.
Gotcha. Okay. And you have that application?
I might need it again, but I'll double check.
Being new to the job.
So then right now, what we're talking about is just looking at it, just a 13-foot wide easement for the sewer line access will be maintained and we're looking at taking the other things off. Is that correct?
Well, and maybe you take the fencing off, but it sounds like these guys are ready to proceed, so we need to probably resolve this in some fashion.
Can I maybe lean on the, the village council for this? It, it seems to me that there are four sequential issues here. One is the, the issue of the right-of-way and does the village need to maintain that right-of-way? The second is the utility easement and what is the language of that easement and what does it guarantee the village access to? And does that easement need to be updated in some way? Because maybe that, that access easement was drafted at the same time the right-of-way was in place. The third is the fence permit, which was before, before the village now and maybe needs to be resubmitted. And the fourth, which will happen sometime in the future and we're not ready yet, is a proposal to, to the zoning commission to consider a conditional use permit for the area beyond what we're talking about today, the southern of the, the south campus.
And I think you're right. I mean, part of the problem, I think, here though is, is that there was a time, six months or nine months ago, where there was a discussion about bringing this plan and, and having a discussion here in the council. And that's, no, that's not happened as far as I know.
No, hasn't, we're not ready yet.
And, and so, you know, we're kinda doing things piecemeal and so you get these questions raised and some of them you can't answer maybe because you're not ready yet. So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, there was at one point this, at least a discussion about having this more broad, at least a broad brush discussion about the plan for the south campus.
And, and in many ways, it's, we're not ready for that discussion, but in many ways, it's reflected in documents before you in principle, that we intend to create an opportunity for, for ecological agriculture with students and the full breadth of, of what that entails, where plants and animals work together and fertilize the landscape. But no surprise to everybody that Antioch is not flush with dollars and can't necessarily move forward with all of our plans as quickly as we might like. So this is one of those things that as we've looked at how to phase in growing the farm to meet the growing number of college students, we're, we're taking one, one bite at a time and we know what we want to do, the details of what we want to do with our, our garden area. But it'll be sometime, maybe this fall, maybe next spring, before we've got sufficient meat on the bones to, to bring together a proposal where we could actually answer the questions and know your answers on, on the larger issue of, of grazing animals.
Council will have to have a public hearing on this as well, is that correct?
In the sense that it would be an ordinance, I mean.
So in, in essence, we can pass this out of here tonight with whatever conditions we put on it and it'll still go to council for final review and input even from Jason at that point.
That's correct. And I would, I would advise the commission to make sure that, you know, the utilities' concerns are completely satisfied at the council level if they were that route. That way, that there's some agreement between the applicant and our sewer utility, whether that be what was proposed tonight or whatever else, that there be something that's copacetic in that between both parties in order to move this forward.
I mean, the same condition could be made, right? Reach an agreement on access for maintenance of utilities. An agreement has not been reached. Is that a condition that we could put on this if we passed it tonight?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, I disagree, I disagree because an, an agreement was reached and John bought that agreement to planning tonight, okay? The, the college then came and said, no, they'd like to change it, okay? So to, to me, we got one of two options is to, as planning, we could agree with the college and, and approve it with the option, or we approve it with what the staff in the planner was bringing to us and then when it goes to council, the college could bring up their objection at that point. Correct?
That's correct.
You know, before the full council. And, and at that time, you would have Jason there to then be able to answer the concerns of, of the college to council and then council would make the final decision.
Or the third option is we could continue this next month.
Correct.
Seeing, see that the next council meeting is the planning, um, working session basically.
The next council meeting is the sidewalks.
The sidewalk discussion, so.
Well, this would need to be advertised and.
It wouldn't make it until June.
Yeah.
It wouldn't make it until June?
No.
And then we'd have to write the legal description and get it all together as well.
There, there is some time.
So, so the, you know, e, even if we approved it as submitted now, there is, I'm, I'm addressing Judy and Chris, there would be time for the, the college to get with Jason and would that be inappropriate?
Well, I mean, there actually would be significant amounts of discussion because we'd have to get the legal description, we'd have to have discussions about what language would actually go in the easement. This would be a fairly complicated easement, given the parameters of the discussion. And I'm, given the discussion here, I, I think there's gonna be some give and take how that language would appear in the di, in the recorded, the document we want, want to record as the easement. So the short answer to your question is, yes, there would be time.
So why are, is planning commission not seeing the language of, of proposed easement?
Well, it starts with, we don't have a legal description of the land that would be involved in that because that, that's part of the process of getting the easement written. And then we would want to define, which we didn't know until today, what we're talking about, a 13-foot swath. And again, that's just, that's part of the process.
And that usually happens after planning commission approves it?
Typically. Plus, they need to incorporate whatever conditions we place on it as well into that.
Right now, this is a planning level discussion.
Okay.
Once it goes to council, the legal.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, well, with all that being said, I mean, I think, I think there's some ideas here that have been discussed. We can continue having a discussion or we can just try to put together a motion and see where we are.
Well, I'd like to move that we accept the staff's recommendation with the conditions.
So the four conditions, the 13-foot easement, the fence on the north side only, no grazing within six feet of the sewer manhole, and the cul-de-sac being addressed as needed in the future.
Right.
So I have a, I guess a point of order. Can we discuss this now or does it have to be seconded before we discuss it?
I think we need to second it and then we can discuss it.
And your second is meaningless except that it moves the topic forward for discussion, so. And then we vote on it and be correct.
So I'll second that.
Well, my concern of just passing as it is, and I, I understand what Jerry said is, you know, there was an agreement and then suddenly tonight, all this new information has come up. I'm concerned about passing something that we know that they are saying they don't want. The, the fencing only on the north side and that they don't want the, they want the gates. And Jason, who is not here to defend wanting the gates. And Jason, who is not here to defend wanting the gates, wants the gates. So, that troubles me, just to pass something that we know there are problems. I, I guess, would prefer to pass something leaving out the fencing that then let the council deal with that issue, because it would give them more time.
And Chris, you have to answer this for me. When it comes to council, can new items be added to what planning has recommended?
I think that they can. I haven't looked at that issue, Jerry, because I'm going to go back and look at the code because this is the first time that it's come up that I can think of. Judy, can you recall?
Yeah, I think they can, because they...
They have.
They have.
Impose their will upon the zoning code, so they say that, yeah, once it gets to the council level, you can, that's your ordinance, you can...
So, they could take things off as well as add things on? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there one that's more difficult than the other?
There would be, what I would expect is that if Planning Commission approves, what Planning Commission would approve, there would be a resolution or an ordinance drafted to mirror what that approval was. And that would be the document by which council would be, have their discussions. And then, they could ask that the ordinance be written to reflect what they want done.
I would like to replace the limit fencing along easement to the north side of the easement with reach an agreement on access for maintenance of utilities, and then I'd be comfortable with the motion to approve the application, to recommend it to council. That's... I'm agreeing with Susan, I think. I would rather leave it a little bit more open and stipulate that the village and the college reach an agreement on access for maintenance of utilities, like we did last meeting, instead of limit fencing along easement to the north side of the easement. I think an agreement needs, I mean, I know that it was met, but they're not, you know, they don't want to do that anymore. And I think that there needs to be more discussion happening, and I don't think it needs to happen in Planning Commission. I think it can happen in council.
Just as a comment, I don't think that, my feeling is that council's not going to accept a recommendation of that nature in an ordinance that you would need to carve out some time that that agreement, those agreements be reached, which is not, I mean, it's quite doable, that the agreement be reached before the ordinance ever goes to council.
Okay, well...
Okay.
We have a resolution that's been made.
A motion.
A motion, rather, and it's been seconded. So, any more discussion about the language as proposed in this motion?
So, Rose, are you moving to make that change?
Well, you just said I...
Well, I think we need to vote on the motion first.
Well, no, because the motion is as stated.
Someone would have to second my change, right?
So, her change needs to be moved and voted on before Jerry's motion.
Okay, so, Rose, what language are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting replacing the second bullet point in the, um... in limit fencing along easement to the north side of the easement with the condition that the college and village reach an agreement on access for maintenance of utilities. You know, before it's approved.
So, that an agreement regarding fencing be reached between the college and the village?
Regarding access to utilities.
Yeah.
Well, regarding fencing specifically, though.
Okay, so you want...
Regarding fencing, you must be guards to access to utilities.
And you think it's appropriate to put a time on there, is that what you're saying?
It's, I'm tossing this over to Chris, because from where I'm sitting, I think you need to have that meeting occur so that that language can be brought back to you, so that when you pass this on to council, it is a done deal.
Okay, well, then, if that's how you feel, Judy, I would retract my motion, right?
This is how I feel. I've touched it before.
Is that your opinion as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason is that typically, what comes out of the Planning Commission has definiteness to it. It is a concrete recommendation that has the i's dotted and the t's crossed with limited amounts of vagary, and there's still significant vagary in this, simply really passing it on to council to say, go figure it out and present it to council.
You know, the other option is that third one, and that is to continue this next month and have these guys meet with Jason and hammer it out so that we have definite, either definite language that's been agreed upon or that they agree to disagree, and then we have to decide.
Can I ask the applicant whether they would like us to figure out the fencing issue or council to figure out the fencing issue?
Well, I don't think council, from what I heard, is it's got to be figured out before it goes to council.
But if, okay.
Then it sounds like maybe that we need to table this and then ask John and Antioch to come to an agreement and to have Jason come to our next meeting, if we have, so if we have questions, we can...
Well, first, we either have to vote up and down.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Well, you have a motion to amend, that's the first...
That's the first one, Rose, but she went through that motion. So, now we have...
A motion to accept staff...
A motion to accept the staff recommendations as they are.
And you second it?
Yes.
You second that? Okay, so, you can call...
So, want to call the roll?
Sims?
Yes.
Stiles?
No.
Pelzow?
No.
Reed?
No.
And Toby cannot vote on this one.
I would say abstain.
Now, do we have a motion to close this hearing and...
Well, if you close it, then the applicant would have to reapply.
We don't want to close it, then. We want to...
Table it?
Table it until next month.
So, we just have a motion, I move to table this.
Second.
Do I need to have more on it if I want them to resolve it?
That'll do it.
Judy, you want to take the vote?
Tabling accomplishes the same.
Okay, Pelzow?
Aye.
Yes. Sims?
Yes.
Stiles?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes. Sorry.
We will continue to work with the applicant on this issue and present her update on the June Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Can I say something with the gates?
Yeah.
Is there by state that requires that? Because I know the state of Tennessee, power companies and telephone companies have no problems cutting your chain, and then you come back and find a little link on there that says, "Pallavale Electric," or...
But we don't want to do that.
But I'm just saying, they do that.
They do that, it's right.
Yes.
Take your stance on it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is agenda planning. I guess we know what we're doing next month.
Well, I got my report. Should I review my report?
Oh, you know, that's right. Let's do the staff report, too, while we're here.
You're talking about your planning report, is that...
Yes, this thing right here. It's quite lengthy this time. I have a couple of things that I have in here. I have one thing that I don't have in here that I want to talk to you guys about. One is, brought back some of the language from the April stat, planner's report. I do have a couple of paragraphs at the end about the zoning lots. I think I can move forward with, you know, if you guys want me to, I can move forward with the swimming pool regulations, the sidewalk displays for outdoor dining, and driveway setback requirements. However, I do have some issues with the zoning lot definition. There's a lot of place areas in the village that, where property owners have several lots that are together but not combined, and the zoning code strictly treats all lot lines as boundaries. And this is typically separate, the separate lots have the ability to be sold off and redeveloped as infill housing. There's a lot of interior lots as well. It goes a little bit further as well with state with building code. In my experience as a building inspector, the building code treats lot lines as building walls. So, every, every structure that's within three feet of a building wall or a lot line has to be fire-rated for fire protection. And that's in the International Residential Code. That's a two-hour fire-rated wall, so that means that if I build a house and I straddling two lot lines, six feet of that wall on, in, on all, applications has to be fire-rated. And it kind of really mucks up the building. So, I feel like if we allow this to continue with the zoning lot policy, that we would not actually be doing property owners' justice for their properties and for the future use of their properties. Currently, the cost of a replat is $10. That is not changing with the permit fee update, it will still be $10. The cost of applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals for variances will go up to $100 in June. You know, I have applications right now pending before the Board of Zoning Appeals where there's a variance request for lots, for buildings that tread a lot lines. We have had them in the past. Any building that is built in this manner, if it's, whether it be a primary structure or accessory structure, would have to get a variance. And we would like to make it easier, on one hand, for property owners to redevelop their properties and improve their properties, but on the other hand, we need to consider the long-term implications of not replating in the village. So, I kind of wanted to see where your guys' temperature on this is and which direction we should proceed with this issue.
Do you think that, I mean, if you replatted, you would just do it on a case-by-case basis? How would that work?
Yeah, so, it would be a case, the person would come in and say, I want to build a something, a garage or something, and I'd say, well, you have four lots that, you know, that consist of your yard, and you would have to...
So, can replating be done administratively? I don't think you can, can you?
I called the county up on this. They only do it if it's a survey. So, they would have to hire a surveyor to combine the lots together and then record it at the county. And then, well, they would come to me first with the replat application, then I would sign off on it and record the county. So, there's a process.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, and I'm going to use my example, okay? I have two adjoining lots. I have a garage on, a freestanding garage on one lot that may be less than five feet from the boundary of the second lot. And then, I have the utility shed on the second lot. So, I could be in violation twice.
Yeah.
Because the shed I know ain't fireproof, and I know the garage is not fireproof.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you built a accessory structure there, you'd have to not only apply for variance, but then also get that fire-rated wall.
Right, okay. Or have it replatted. Okay. Now, would I have, and let's say, for example, I wanted to sell the whole thing, okay? I couldn't sell it the way it is right now, okay?
You could, you could sell the part, because the way that your deed is written is it has all of these, like, lots in it.
Right, so I could sell both of the lots.
You can sell, you can sell the individual lots off.
Right, and then whoever bought it would have to deal with it.
So, it's just a...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It's something that is much more common here than a lot of other places, but that doesn't mean that it should be ignored in the sense that, do we want to look at this strict, do we want to continue looking at this strictly? Do we want to write language that would, like the zoning lot definition, and basically, they would come to the village, apply to basically have their lots, their individual lots considered as one lot for the purpose of whatever zoning application is in place. But that doesn't get them out of the building code requirement. So, that's kind of like a, solves one problem but not the other problem, solution. And then, the other thing is that, you know, what if they do want to, if they do want to sell a portion of a lot off, then at that point, we would have to trigger a replat or a spot subdivision in order to make that happen.
So, people are not replating and just getting variances, and those variances are being approved? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know the history of the variances, although I know that people will attempt for variances more often than not. I'm not sure if they get approved or not. I haven't looked at the record. But my sense is that it is not a special circumstance in this village to have a separate lots together.
So, you're saying have an administrative option instead of a Board of Zoning Appeals off option?
Correct.
So, essentially, the administrative option would be they come to you and they say, I have two adjoining lots, but I want to build a house across both of them. And you say, yes, okay.
Yeah, they pay a fee, and then we have to treat it like that. The city of Dayton has a definition and a process for that, and that's why we'd basically model after.
It sounds like that's a lot easier than having to have your property surveyed and obviously, then if you try to sell those two, one of those two parcels, then you're kind of...
But, like I said, it would still trigger the building code requirement, so... County would still have to say, oh, you know, you need to have a fire-rated wall.
You, I mean, we could, like, be open about that when people are applying. Could that be on the application, like, PS?
The PS, building and fire code regulations still apply.
What's the county's position? What do they say?
I haven't actually talked to the county about it yet, but that was one of the discussions I wanted to have with them. I talked to the county surveyor, the county GIS guy, though, so, about the process. And they said it's absolutely a survey. Where I worked in northern Kentucky, you could just go to the county and combine the lots, and it was done, which, it was pretty quick and pretty painless, and for some, but out here, it's different, so...
I think that's what you want to do, is find the quickest, easiest, pain-free way to do it.
But that does, I mean, that does create problems for the person in the future or, you know, there, I mean, it's not...
So, I mean, the question I guess I'm asking is, like, do we want to try to fix, do we try to want to try to maintain our stance on these split lots and try to force replats on them and get them to do the right thing for the long term, or continue to keep the existing lot lines together with a solution that would work on an administrative level but not on any other levels?
I think it would be nice to resolve it overall, to make it an administrative process that they, you know, file. And then, for you to talk to the county and see if there's any way to resolve it. And if there's not, then obviously, people will have to get it surveyed. Because it sounds to me like there will be people who want to, in fact, I have two lots like that. And I will probably be doing something, and they need to do that.
There's an entire section of the village where there's a house built on, like, three or four lots, you know, and they're all really tiny, so...
That would make sense in all sorts of ways, after looking at this matter so many years, how many houses are on three and four and five, six lots per property?
So, the read I'm getting from you guys is to move, to look at the zoning lot definition and go with that route? All right.
Probably.
Okay.
Makes sense.
All right, next item is grass-cutting ordinance. I was preparing to enforce this, and I found out that we don't actually enforce it until July 1st. So, I kind of just wanted to get... So I kind of just wanted to get your guys' read on the grass cutting ordinance. From April, basically, the page here says from April to July, there's nesting habitat for wildlife, so you can leave your grass grow. After that, you have to mow your grass back 10 feet from the front line, five from the side in the rear unless your adjacent property owner gives you permission to not mow it, so...
So does that mean that if the adjacent property owners are fine with your not cutting it, you don't have to?
Exactly.
Okay.
But that's only for the side and rear, not for the front?
Not for the front. The front, the first 10 feet are non-negotiable.
The front 10 feet.
After July 1st.
After July 1st. Starting one off.
Well, you know, this was probably part of a 40-hour discussion that crafted that language.
Forty-hour discussion in 1970s, I think.
I'm not sure that we want to do anything with it other than leave it alone.
So I'm intending to enforce it. I just wanted, you know, run it by you guys first, make sure that I would... I'm addressing it the correct way, that it's only the first 10 feet and then five on the side.
And 12 inches.
At 12 inches, yes. So I'll be out there with my ruler, my one-foot ruler.
You need to talk to Ed Amline about the system.
Yeah?
Talk to Ed Amline because he might give you a little insight on what he ran into with that as well.
Okay, cool. And then before we get to summer meetings, I do want to review a situation developing with the BP gas station with you guys. It appears that they are erecting a tent in the quadrant of the area, which according to the minutes from the June 10, 2013, meeting is a no-no, so...
Erecting what?
As part of their conditional use of approval for having commercial sales on their site.
Correcting tents.
Tents.
So the...
Tents or canopies?
Canopies.
Canopies, yes. So just to clarify...
I think we totally couldn't have any.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And mainly it's because bonneties, those windows get blocked by those canopies, and it's a conditional use, and that was a condition we placed on them. I actually spoke to Jane Nipper about this on Saturday, so I don't know. Remind her of that.
I saw it on Saturday when I was running, and I was like, not impressed.
At what time? Where did you...
Well, actually, I saw it Sunday morning.
Oh, they were still up?
They were setting it up.
Yeah, they were setting it up Saturday, I think I saw.
Well, it says here, the third condition is that the only non-food mobile vendor will be permitted along the southwest property line adjacent to 220 Ziny Avenue. And it will be restricted to a display height of six feet so that they will not visually interfere with the neighboring use. The thing is that the conditional... The terms of the... The tent is discussed earlier on, but it is not an actual condition.
It's just the height is the condition.
The height is the condition.
You have a food truck parked there and things like that.
So they moved the food truck to the other side. But the canopies appear to be higher than six feet.
I think there's... I remember Lori asking being vehement on the subject. It's in those minutes.
It is in the minutes, yes, but it's not in the conditions of approval. And that's what I'm trying to get clarification on. Because there's discussion about the tent and that we... That there was a feeling that the tent should not be allowed, but then there's the height. And I believe the height was intended to restrict the tent, perhaps. Because right now, if they don't have the canopy on the tent, they have the skeleton of the tent.
Yeah, it's only six feet tall, too.
And it appears that the rest, that the display items are six feet. Because there's a comment about needing to limit it to the height of a standard van, which actually is higher than six feet, I think. So I'm monitoring this. I'm going to be sending them a letter, reminding them of the conditions. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it and to kind of get some clarification as to what, where you guys are coming from with that. So with that, move on to summer hours. And basically, we will have a June meeting, as demonstrated tonight, but for, and possibly a July meeting. However, between July 22 and August 10, I will be in Malaysia as part of the International Fellows Program. And I didn't get a chance to talk, to introduce our international fellows tonight, and they should come up and introduce themselves again to the Planning Commission. And they have been quietly sitting in the back.
Don't up, ladies. Don't be shy.
And observing their Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, Jerry, that's my ass is yesterday, last week. So I'm from Malaysia. I live in Jakarta. So yeah, I'm on the international fellowship program here. My aim is to learn about the local governance, particularly how to engage citizens in local governance. So I work on this social media news with the local officials here.
Welcome to town.
Hi, hello. I'm Nadia Faraghina, Jawa'i. I'm from Malaysia. And my focus here is more towards renewable energy. I would like to learn how far Yellow Spring has grown towards renewable energy.
Thank you.
Cool. So they're here with us this month and working very hard on renewable energy and looking at our internet policies and our community engagement activities. So they've been taking in a lot of information and enjoying the village life. But I will be going over to Malaysia to work with Nadia at the end of July and August. I won't be available for a meeting then. We'll just have any applications that come in going to the September meeting at that time.
So we'll have the June meeting because we'll have the item that we were on table. And we may or may not have a July depending on if there are...
Applications or continuations of applications.
So just to let everyone know, I'm not going to be here. I'll be out of town.
In July or...
June 8, which is the second Tuesday, second Monday. So that means we're down to three, which is still a quorum. We're okay there.
Are we okay, Chris?
No, you're okay.
Okay.
And you do have Adam here, so...
But it's a continuation of the hearing.
But he's here.
Because he wasn't here last week.
Yeah, he missed last week's.
So I actually have that question about Tim. So can Tim and Adam jump in at this point, Chris, if they were here for lunch?
The last time this issue came up was with the solar array. And we determined that Jerry could not participate, I think, because Lori was here. It's the summer. Was the other way around. I'd have to pull out my old notes on that, but I think let's assume that you can't vote. You can participate in the sense of ask questions and have input, but ultimately on the voting aspect, then because you weren't here for everything, that was the position we took on the solar array.
Okay.
But this is a little different, too, in the sense that we've revisited so many times. So let me explore that because this will be the, how many times?
This will be the third time. Next month, the third time.
Third time, okay.
So Adam, you're on next month.
Cool.
And we're thinking that Tim may be able to participate.
I'll look at it again, yes.
Okay. Okay.
If you're done, I just have a quick thing that you guys, you folks can do afterwards, which is if you're following what's going on in council, each of the board of commission members is being asked to sign a statement of roles and responsibilities, which essentially indicates that you understand your role and responsibility with regard to your commission. And I will pass them out, and then you can think, do the signing, contemplating, et cetera. And one copy will come back to me and one copy remains with you.
Is that a requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds like we are finished. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?